Mayor, I'd like to kind of back up to the item that we skipped yesterday. We can improve this one for lunch and start another one. The zoning development and maintenance extension, which is somewhat part of our goal. Well, it's not about three days, but obviously our standards affect the quality of what goes in for a given location. This item is one that's kind of been on the stove top for a while. Steve's been working with the National League Cities and company utility service partners to give us an option for a service that we currently provide somewhat unique, that is, a sewer cleaning service. Strictly up to you all, there's nothing that requires us from you. I just wanted you to inform us about the option, plus how it works, so you can make a decision of whether you want to continue what you're doing or do something different. So, Steve, Rock, or Roll, will you explain what this is all about?
Very good. On the, this particular topic, I'm going to give you a little brief history on what we do in public services as far as service line. As far as service line and maintenance, let me go through it that way. On the water side, the city maintains the service line from the main to the meter. And that meter is usually at the property land, and we do not perform maintenance or repairs on water lines, private water lines from the meter to the house next to it. On the sewer service, however, this practice has been in place for many, many years where a property owner owned and is responsible for the sewer line, or sewer stoppage is skewed from the house to the main. And the city provides, has provided for many years, emergency sewer cleaning, stoppage cleaning, you want to call it that, or removing, if you stock up sewer or blockage in that sewer line from outside of the house, normally there's a clean out to the city main. And currently, we do not build or stoppages between the main and the property land. However, if a stoppage occurs between the house and the right-of-way, then there's particular or set fees at any ordinance for removing those stoppages, and we'll get into those in a few moments. But basically, first two are free per calendar year, and then there's a scale that goes up from that for two, three, or four, or three, four, or five cleans that you go to every year.
That's between the property land and the house?
That's basically, it's, when we clear it, it clears from the house to the main.
Right, they can tell the difference.
We can tell the difference.
It's inside their program.
It's inside their program. However, I must reiterate that it's the customer's responsibility in most survey cities, and we feel this way from the maintenance activities, that the service line from the house to the main is a responsibility of the property owner.
That's exactly how we treat the water side. If you don't treat the water side the same way that you treat the sewer side, for some reason, you...
Causes for stoppages broken, certain separated service line and routes, well, same two causes are often the cause of a problem with the water line. A neighbor had a separated water line, actually twice in the past two summers, and the city can go out there and help her out with it, they have to hire someone to do it. Whereas with, if it's sewer, for some reason, you go out there and do it.
It's a long-standing practice. Anyway, next slide, please. Currently, we have two different service times. We have normal business hours, and that's from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Again, those are the fees I just mentioned a few moments ago. Remember this slide, it's normal business hours. After-hours, holidays, nights, and weekends, again, this is what the cost is if we run that. In October, in, sorry, October 1st, and based on the budget direction, in August, we raise that fee from a hundred dollars to a hundred and forty dollars. Okay, next slide. Emergency cleaning, basically, this is data. Six hundred and ninety cleanings in the last, in six, I believe it's per six months in 2011. And again, forty percent were on private stoppages between the house and the, I'm sorry, forty percent of those were between the property land and the main, and sixty percent of those stoppages were between the house and the right-of-way line. Most people generally, to go back, when you go back to look at those fees, they'll wait to the Monday through Friday, seven to ten, before their calls. And that creates some problems, especially on the weekends, if they have stoppage on the weekend. Basically, go outside, unscrew the drainage cap that runs on the ground, and that's a violation of the sanitary sewer overflow requirements, which we can be penalized for. We can be cited for that from the state of Texas. That alleviate the problem? For them, it alleviates the immediate problem.
For the house and the house.
For the yard. First neighbors.
But it doesn't always do.
Quality play might be so good.
Doesn't always, but it releases at that point, we know that stoppage is somewhere before that clean-out to main. Basically, we receive complaints from local plumbers in the past, and periodically, we'll hear a plumber say, "That wire you in our business, taking business away from us, for cleaning and maintaining a sanitary sewer line in private property." City does not perform, again, the maintenance on private property, other than emergency clean activities. We do not prepare the lines, but we do go in and clear that stoppage. There's not been too many activities where we've gone in to clean a line and actually damaged a person's line. We not run the high-pressure hose through the sidewall of a private sewer line between the house and main.
But we have blown it out through the roof.
But we have blown it, toilets off, and then the others, they work their things. So, again, going to the next bullet, we have the liability of damage to the homes. And it's not pretty sight, nor is the customer really happy with us at that point in time. Insurance companies do not generally cover that aspect of repairs, so there's always some questions back to us in a claim form, and then that goes to any amount for review.
And denial.
And denial.
Which then creates problems because basically caused damage that you were in the future.
What this also does, per federal rule and state rule, we are to do mainline cleaning on sewer lines to prevent those sanitary sewer overflows. When we're maintaining or performing private land sewers, that means our crews are not out doing what they need to be doing. We're cleaning probably, I think we've got about three hundred and fifty miles of sewer lines in the city. So, again, this is one issue that we concentrate on, is trying to maintain those lines and prevent overflows in our main lines. That's made expense in 2011 was, for this service, was about eighty-eight thousand dollars. Claims in 2010, prior year, we've had one claim close to five thousand dollars that we were...
That's correct, right before Christmas.
Right before Christmas, yes. Give you a little side story, I do remember we cleaned flushing one operation, and we thought we cleared the line and actually filled this swimming pool full of sewer. So, there was, that's been many, many years ago, but we do remember that little episode.
Yeah, because it went through the wall.
That actually went, we cleaned it, and for some reason, it blocked the stoppage. Again, but it reversed, and somehow they had their sewer line tied into, illegal connection into the pool.
It was mostly draining the pool.
Yeah. So, it drained the pool right into the sewer thing.
Yeah, the pool into the sanitary, if you're not supposed to. Anyway, if we reduce the service and allow for local plumbers, we'll get into different options in a moment, our overtime expenses, twenty, thirty, thirty-five thousand, that could be saved. The rest of that value is then backed into maintaining existing city mains, and those mains are six, eighths, and larger, six and eight inch mains and larger. Opportunity costs, just normal flushing opportunities, again, we're just not out there doing what we need to be doing for the city intercepting transmission system back to the water.
Can you put any number on that?
Oh...
It'll be off different.
It'll be, it'll be about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it could be between that eighty-seven and thirty-five.
Okay.
Or it could be full eighty-seven, we use the...
Our service restrictions here is during normal business hours, again, I said this three times, we're not being able to do our mainline flushing. We normally get anywhere from four to six requests a day for clearing of stoppages on private property. And again, I must remind you, this is residential only. Our commercial operations, we do not clean sewer lines from the business to the main. The day call plumber. So, this, all I'm speaking up here is residential. And our response time in clearing is anywhere from thirty minutes to an hour. Our cost for cleaning operations, again, during normal business hours is fifty dollars. After-hours, I think it's a hundred and forty. And if you take the, we see this in a few moments, the ordinance actually calls for you move to like a third cleaning, which is, I believe it's fifty dollars. For the states, you'll pay the hundred and forty, plus the fifty, so it's a hundred and ninety dollars when they go to the cleaning service. It does add on the third, on the third case per calendar year. Our options, we'll go through each one of these, is maintain existing service where each of the rate payers pays a proportion of this cost. And again, utilizing, you have twenty thousand customers, your subs, those twenty thousand subsidizing, if each one had just one clean, six hundred and ninety customers, even more likely, look at it that way. There are probably a half a dozen of these that have multiple cleanings, either a second, third, or fourth clean. But again, relate that down, you've got about a three to one ratio on...
In a year.
In a year.
Three to four a year.
Yes, and the reason is, it's cheaper for them to call us than to go out and fix their problem. This is, this is one of the concerns that we have. It's cheaper to, I can get two free units, or get two free cleanings, get hopefully a fly a year, I don't have the expense of replacing the line.
Are a lot of those, or what precedes those, do you think, are repeat customers?
I want to say probably less than ten percent.
That have us come out regularly?
Regular means more than once in a calendar year.
Only ten percent of them are, are doing every year?
Yes. We have some that actually know the system and will call us right before Thanksgiving and right before Christmas, saying they have a stoppage, and they go clean it. So, when they have family come in, they know they don't have that problem.
I understand it, but how many of those, how many of those people are preceding why they're doing it? Only ten percent of those people are doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, we, I can check the numbers, but that's in the back of my mind. It's not that, it's not that many people that have repeat. The second item is to maintain the existing service with the customer, assuming the actual cost. Start charging as the plumbers do for our service. Take that back in as the revenue, and provide funding for the program.
We still have a lot going.
We still have a lot going.
I'm sorry, you're saying that they can, we're not having a drainage issue. I mean, I mean, I've used the service before because a drainage at the main was not on my property, because my snake goes out far enough and I didn't get anything. But the thing is, I was, if, if they're out there, the city goes out there, there's no backflow, why are they still cleaning it anyway if there's nothing backing up? I'm just curious, I don't understand why they're doing it if there isn't a problem.
They're not cleaning private service lines, so the backup's in our main, getting with our main exclusively.
Well, if they're calling just for regular maintenance before Thanksgiving and before whatever, and they don't...
Well, if they're on the pipeline, we don't know until we find something that, or they say it's blockage.
What happens, what can happen?
Well, and I call them out there, there's stuff flowing out, you know.
Yeah, something you can tell.
There are some stoppages that are slow, they'll call in because it's slow, may not be in tow blockages, but the toilet begins gurgling. Or by the time we get out there, pipe could be dry.
Yes.
And we could see it, so we don't take that chance with the service order running, we go ahead and run it.
Okay.
Whether they're trying to circumvent what we originally tried to accomplish.
That makes sense. But on that, aren't, aren't you already there to determine that it's on the right-of-side? Because they call you when the line is stopped up here. And, and when I've used it, I had used it, what, ten years ago? It was always on the city side. It was, it was the old pipes, like thirty-year-old pipes, or whatever. And, but you had to find out where it was to see where the problem was.
Correct.
So, you're already doing the work. I think that was probably the logic, it was usually something.
Same thing on the water. When there's a water line, they call us and show up.
Yeah, but in all the cases I had, it was the city's problem.
Well, that's some...
That's the whole...
That's what I'm talking about. You, you had to get to that point to determine where the problem was.
And that's fine, we do that again on the water line, but once we determine that it's on the customer's side and the water line is stopped, or if here...
But sixty percent, at least what the numbers were, sixty percent were on the city side.
No, sixty percent are on the private side.
Okay, I thought you said four.
Forty's on the city side. And when I'm saying city side, it's from the right-of-way to the main. Remember my comment way ago was, we is a private, single-source line to the main. We, from an industry standpoint, not the city, from an industry standpoint, from the sewer, from the house to the main is the customer's responsibility.
But I'm not gonna, you're gonna, the city's not gonna come in and have me tear up the street to fix the line, it's up to you to fix the line.
But if it's, if there is a problem, and they find it, whether a plumber finds, and we have some plumbers that go out and do this work.
Sure.
They do, some people do not call the city. If there's a problem between the right-of-way line and the main, the plumber or homeowner could call the city and say, "We believe there's a problem there." We would respond, repair, or deviate, do whatever we can do to find the problem, and then repair within the right-of-way.
Right.
But I'm still on the hook for the plumber, even though it's the city's blockage.
But the blockage is on the city, on the private owner's responsibility to the main. If the main is stopped up, you're correct, the plumber, if he goes out and there's a stoppage in the main, the city main, not on the customer's side, plumber would run the line, determine it's in the city main, and would call us, best, in the best case scenario.
Right.
That plumber would still have to be paid by the homeowner.
Right. Whereas today, it's not.
That's correct.
I, I don't, I don't get, I don't get penalized for a city issue.
That's correct.
But if we swap, now I'm gonna have to pay to identify this is a city issue.
It's only if you call the plumber. What most people do is they call the city first.
Sure, sure.
They call the city first, whether it's a water line...
But what we're talking about is, what we're talking about is moving people to call plumber first.
No, no.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, okay.
I think the difference, what we're saying here, if you, if you have a, just like today, if you have a situation, you call the city today, wait until, now, you call the city, if it's not, and the city determines it's not on the city's side, but it's on your side, we don't stop there until you call a plumber. Then we flush out the residential side, the property owner's side for them.
Okay.
What they're talking about doing is, the only thing changed is, they called the city, correct me if I'm wrong, but they called the city, we would go out there, determine if it's on our side, the city's side, we would fix it. If it's on the residential side, we'd say, "You got a problem, you need to have somebody to fix it."
If that's what they do. We're a little bit ahead of ourselves as to what we're gonna do, that comes into play here in a minute. And the program that we have in place is designed for the person to actually call the people that they contract with to investigate that type of thing under kind of insurance type of approach. So, hang tight, we'll, we'll get into that.
I mean, I think that's kind of basically the difference, what they're looking at, stopping to do, us doing that on their side.
Us doing, yeah, on their residential side, okay.
And that, basically, that goes into four and five. Four is basically discontinue the existing service that we have, where we clean private sewers, and just have the customer take care of that, and that would be by calling the plumber. Or number five, what Mr. King was discussing was, discontinue the current service, provide an alternative, how to clean sewer services, and do that under a warranty, a cheaper program.
I didn't realize the city actually came from the private side, because my experience has been like Ruby's worth always been the city side.
Well, mine had come on the private side to figure out where the problem was.
Yes, same with mine.
So, that's, that's what I'm talking about. You're already in it to determine.
In the old...
And if the water's coming up out, the part that's on the city, did the blockage just clean out to the main, where everybody lives?
Right. Or it could be in the main blockage back.
Yeah, the next item too.
Question, and then you're just curious, how are most residents aware of this service? Is it just because they call the city first, or are they actually aware when they call?
Ooh, I gotta answer. I gotta answer, I called the plumber several times before I found out the city service, and the plumber told me, "Well, it's the city side, you know, they have this free service." That's where I heard about it.
Okay.
I don't have sewer connections, so I didn't know if it was on, you know, people who have sewer connections get something, their water bills, and...
They don't do any marketing.
No, no marketing.
It's an original education.
Sometimes we'll just show up out there and investigate whether it's in the main, and it's not in the main, and it turns out to be in the service line, we'll just tell them, "No, we need that kind of thing."
I didn't know if it was migrants, because I'm having sewer.
You don't have access to one?
I don't have city sewer.
Most individuals, whether it's Louisville, I'm sure it's cities across the nation, if they have a sewer problem, they contact the city first.
Almost always the case.
Most cities around us, we have a little survey, most cities do not do what we do. And basically, what happens is, they'll call and say, "I have a sewer stoppage." And at that point, that, that particular city would say, "We don't perform private lines cleaning, we'll go out and check the mains." And so, that's generally what happens.
Same thing on the water side, you're right, I keep emphasizing that, on the water side. Just to use an anecdotal story, my neighbor last year, the year before, has a swimming pool in her front yard, literally. There was so much water in her front yard, peak of the summer. And her response, typical response from anybody is, "Call the city." There's water in my front yard. Now, we come out, we check, it's not our main, it's not a, it's not the leak at the junction of our main and the service line, it's clearly somewhere between that point and the house. She had a break in her own line.
You're talking about the meter, when you say junction.
Yeah, that's the... And so, at that point, we say, "Sorry, we're gone, it's up to the owner to fix that." And it's far more problematic actually on the water side, because that water isn't running, it's costing a fortune.
The right-of-way that you're talking about, is that from where the water meter is?
Generally, yes.
Generally, because it's right at the sidewalk. So, when you're talking about right-of-way or water meter, sewer jaw or water, excuse me, you're talking about, about that distance?
About that side, thanks on the sidewalk, it's usually about one foot inside the sidewalk toward the house, that's generally right-of-way, you don't put the sidewalk exactly on the right-of-way line, it's usually one foot off the right-of-way line.
Well, like Councilman Gillman during saying, "I had the same problem, it's always been past the sidewalk."
Correct.
We'll go ahead and listen.
The first option, again, is to maintain the existing service, and I call this the free service, the first two items, our first two cleanings are free in a calendar year. And basically, some of the concerns we have, and the city has, it does not provide incentive repairs. We do free cleanings, I've got a broken pipe, I've got tree roots, I've got conch toys, or injure turtles, or whatever else and stuff, we get them in.
Injure turtles in the sewer, very nice.
We found bowling balls, and good things, or... Non-paying cleaning service results in disconnection. We do charge this on the water bill, it's added to your water bill, you can go over to the third cleaning. And if you don't pay it, it's just not, not paying your garbage bill, you catch the water off. Liability issues, again, maintain. Again, the cost is about thirteen percent, if you take our overall budget for this operation, it's about thirteen percent of our system cleaning. City, again, bill of charges for the house and main. Option two is to maintain the existing service, but creating a price list or a charge to the customer for all of the services. And first, on that, our normal business hours are fifty eights, about three days, some of the stuff. The first two cleans that were free go fifty dollars, and then escalate from that point. After-hours, holidays, nights, and weekends, again, you see, the one night is the first call, all the way up to two hundred and ninety dollars. The average cost that we found from three plumbers that would give us some pricing on this is about two hundred dollars for a trip to clean your sewer without video. So, twenty, twenty? Okay. Basic services, again... How many is one name? Basically, on basic services, you just clean it, that can either be by, normally we use a pressure system to remove the stoppage. And this does not include video or root cleaning. If they've got terrible roots, we just punch through the roots, get going again, and then they need to call a plumber to take care of the rest of the problem. Same issues on the last three bullets as was in option two. Option three is expand the service level, basically this one is option two, but adding a charge for video cost or root cleaning, if the customer so desires. Again, that would be a customer choice, if he wanted the video, we can pinpoint a few inches of what the stoppage is, visualize if the line is not underwater, or if they've got a dip in the line, I cannot tell what the problem is, but generally, if it's a broken pipe or three roots, we can determine that for them at that point, what problem that would help them in their repair of when they call a plumber. Option four is to discontinue the cleaning service, and basically, like most cities direct the customer to local plumbers, and then we will not provide names or contact for those plumbers, but again, recommend they, they secure a local life plumber. This particular item does reduce our liability, because we will not be held property, increases our SSO compliance, our sanitary sewer overflow compliance at stake, because they will be responsible for any discharge, if there's discharge on the ground. They force that, but this also puts our people back out on the street during that SSO compliance on our city mains. They put people out to clean the mains if they need to do it. This is our overtime appeal, and again, puts that service, our private service work back to the plumbers. And again, the customer, plumber, would clear the service line to the main.
Now, just on that option right there, is that what I was talking about earlier? If you want that option, that would be basic, we would still go out there, if they called us, we would still go out there, determine if it's on our side or their side.
That's correct.
If it's on the city's side, we would fix it. If it's on their side, you're saying, please say, "We're sorry, but it's on your side, we can fix it."
That's you for the waterfront.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay?
You can't do that unless you run something through the...
The plumber would determine that.
You can tell, plumber would, will you tell it's in the city main?
You can tell?
Yeah, we go to, we go there.
Eliminate the main. No, it's in our main now. If it's not in our main, then by, on visual, or by elimination, you know, it's in the service line.
I'm just kinda curious how they determine that, because when they come to my place, they go through my little port, and they put that stake all the way, and then they go nine minutes, sixty feet, or seventy.
They're really in our, you know, main, we need to step up.
But it's, it's the basis, and they do it that way because you have called.
Right. They're used to doing the, the clean-out, so they're gonna go there first, as opposed to this, where they go with our main first.
Main, the manholes are generally three hundred feet, and if I've got a stoppage on one side of the manhole, they'll check upstream, downstream manholes, and then they look at where your stoppage is. If there's a stoppage in the main, that manhole, the upstream manhole will look for.
It just seems to be...
Or will be elevated.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but it just seems to be, in my case, it just happened to be my house at the T intersection where I tee into the main, it seems that's where the blockage always is.
And when we get to this particular slide here in just a few moments, or next option, that's where we're... And when we get to this particular slide here in just a few moments, our next option, that's where we will work with this alternative. So, if there is a problem, we will get notice of it and we will repair anything in the right-of-way. I don't want the plumbers in the right-of-way.
I understand.
So, we'll fix those.
Question on option four, why does it increase SSO compliance?
We're not performing private sanitary sewer cleanings, which puts my people, my staff people, my maintenance people back out cleaning, uh, the mains that they're required to.
So, that thirteen percent, remember earlier, you're basically free in that timeline to go back into compliance with the state?
Thirteen percent, yes, it basically, uh, it's about fifty thousand dollars excluding overtime. The, uh, maintenance are the, we're putting people back out for those four to six hours a day out cleaning service, uh, sewer. The thirteen percent is reference to our overall night and night, uh, crew and cleaning operation total, but the eighty thousand is thirteen percent of that. Option five is a warranty program, this is the alternative that we were speaking of, leading into. This, uh, basically reduces our liability, again, increases our compliance by cleaning the mains throughout the city, not private lines. Again, reducing overtime, reduces cost to the customer, this is important from going back to that hundred and ninety dollar average, or two hundred dollar average for the plumbers. Some cases, I think, twenty, that are, that's probably the goal.
Is that cash?
I'll just check.
Check.
Thanks for your interview.
Thanks, that was check at about ten o'clock at night.
Anyway, uh, this particular is a non-mandatory program, they may use a plumber, they do not want to use a warranty program, it's a customer's choice. And it's the same basic service, we have worked with the USP, and agree to maintain our existing service level, which is, uh, perform, uh, bids customer stack within one hour, clear the stoppage and, uh, the full. Next slide, please. On the water line program, our option five is to, uh, basically leave it as it is, uh, this is the way it works today. And on the water line is to prepare the water line by a quarter.
This program addresses both the water and the sewer line problems that private customer would have. So, if they have a water line leak, they can use this program, or a sewer line leak, they can use this program. Can they opt for one or the other?
Yes. Here are the rates, uh, negotiated, and basically, if you sign up within the first sixty days, you have that rate. And if you sign up and make an annual payment, you can see the annual charge of that, and that's multiple call, uh, multiple calls that needed. And after a period of time, in the prime days, it's here with USP, and you can go over this in a few moments, but basically, uh, forty-four dollars a month is, you know, that's an hour service fee. Per year, that one's per year, I'm sorry, per, per...
What this is, is essentially prepaid services or insurance type program, you're paying a certain fee. If you have any need to use the services, they come out and perform it, at no additional cost.
Twenty-four hours a day?
Twenty-four hours a day, one hour response on emergency, like laboring material. All right, next, next slide. Uh, sewer line program, again.
On that, on that new one here, aren't you gonna have to say thanks from the plumbers? If a concern is the plumber complaining that you're not going to try to...
The, the issue is that USP is going to contract with all local plumbers, they will be getting this business.
So, they're not... They won't be making near the money they would be now.
But they're getting a, they're getting a cash stream.
Well, they will contract with qualified local plumbers.
Of their choosing.
Of their, of their choosing, they have a, have an agreement form and a, and a set of requirements that they have to meet. But if, if a service line is under damage, they go up to four thousand dollars if they have to repair a sewer line. And so, that cost is guaranteed, or whatever that cost is negotiated between the plumber and USP, just pay the company once he finishes the project.
Is he wanting your contracts or something like that?
Yes, it's, actually, it's a month, a month, or you pay an annual, it's an annual.
I mean, if you did, could I do one for five years right away?
I'm sure USP would work something out with...
Steve, one other question, I'm assuming you know on this water line program, um, any restrictions on the length of water line or going under driveways or...
No. There is, that'd be good for me. There is, there is a couple of items that, uh, give your...
It's about two hundred and forty, block?
There is a couple of issues, I can explain that, is if you have shrubbery trees that you not replaced, your landscape product did that something. All right, next item. Uh, this is a warranty program, it's, uh, one recognized by bigger cities and, and gets adopted or approved. And also, North Central Texas Council's government, they have a, uh, COG went out, did an RSQ, and basically, uh, USP received that, uh, participation in interlocal agreement.
Actually, the way it works is that when the COG went up on the proposal, they teamed up with the National League of Cities to provide this program. Basically, nationwide, uh, the program itself, uh, through the National League of Cities administered by USP, who we have a representative from here today. So, the city participates through an interlocal with the COG, and the COG has the master contract with the NLC and handles all the quality controls for the issues, or for the city. So, if there's a quality control issue with one of our customers, USP isn't providing fast enough service or complying with the terms of the agreement, we'll be dealing with that through the COG, and the COG will be dealing with that with the NLC.
So, so the, your contract is between the COG and...
Which contract?
And USP?
We'll have, we would have...
So, if I got a problem, am I going through the city, to the COG, to the NLC, to these guys?
It's one way, or you can deal directly with USP.
No, if I have a problem with USP, if I gotta go through all these other...
If you call to USP and you haven't got satisfaction, then you call us, and then we take it from there.
Okay, just because there's a lot of layers all of a sudden.
Well, it's really going directly to the NLC, yeah, so.